Good evening. I'm going to call the June 30th, 2022 regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Moskowitz.
President.
Councilmember De La Rata, absent. Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 24th, 2022 regular meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, not this evening there is.
We don't have.
Excuse me. Moving on to privilege of the floor.
Leslie Gold, 1919, Potucket Avenue. And I just wanted to briefly remember a former town employee, Mary Ann Berg. Mary Ann worked for many years in the assessor's office. And a lot of people remember her as a tall lady with a passion for purple. But she was also a, really in my mind, an exemplary public servant who not only knew the processes involved, but was able to explain them to people who came in and beloved by many seniors for helping them navigate all the paperwork involved in filing for the senior exemptions and that kind of thing. So I just always feeling to remember her. Now, I do have a comment. I'm pleased that the town is no longer printing out all the resolutions because I thought that was unnecessarily killing trees. But I'd like a little more description on the agenda of what the resolutions are. I know the resolutions are published with the agenda, but for people come to the meeting cold, they don't have that background. And you know, for somebody like me, it's a pain in the neck to add everything in. And I'm not asking for a lot more information, it's just a point, person's name, title, where they're from, whether it's, in the case of the police lately, we've had some lateral transfers, or whether it's solicitor appointment or whatever, or authorized purchase of, from what company, at what price pursuant to state contract, mini bid, lowest responsible price or whatever the current term is, something like that, just so people know what's really going on and that's not just a vague description. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for privilege of the floor? Okay, I have one letter that was submitted by Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fair Lawn Parkway, Niskuna. "I am unable to attend this evening's meeting due to a business conflict. During the course of several months, I have expressed concerns about the town's spending of our taxpayers' money. I have spoken to several residents in my district who are being adversely affected by inflation on steroids, fuel and electricity, food increases, et cetera. No one I have spoken to can sustain at this time a raise in town taxes. Inflation must also be placing burden, placing on burden on the town except if you, as elected officials, are hiding in a bubble unaware of the problem. You are certainly spending money as if you discovered a pile of gold. We were promised that an in-depth audit would be conducted if Jason Moskowitz was elected. No word on that. I have heard that everything is fine. Well, from a fiscal point of view, it cannot be fine. Most private and public organizations are feeling the financial burden. Please do not think you can come to the residents asking for an tax increase when you have not curtailed spending. Some of you and a former board member who resigned complained vociferously that the past board did not employ a hiring process. Let me remind you that you have filed, filled at least four top positions without advertising or interviewing. I was told that everyone hired is competent by whose standards. Without advertising or interviewing, you cannot say you have hired the best. When spending taxpayers' dollars, we, the taxpayers, deserve the best. There have been a great deal of campaign promises and an equal number of broken promises. In closing, do not expect the taxpayers to pay for this by suggesting a tax hike and blaming it on inflation when in reality, you are the root cause of the problem. Sent from my iPhone." Are there any other members here who would like to speak for privilege of the floor? Okay. We'll move on to our resolutions. And for the sake of time, we'll be going a little bit out of order and we'll begin with our ceremonial resolution, number 2022-190, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
190, 190.
Oh, okay. I know.
A resolution recognizing the Schenectady County Auxiliary Police for exemplary service to residents of the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to thank the Schenectady Auxiliary Police for everything you do to support our town. There are so many events and functions that are only possible, including Niska Day, without your help, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
I would also like to thank the Auxiliary Police for the service and support they provide to our local police department. They do their job, they put themselves at risk for little to no compensation. So, thank you, and we appreciate the support you provide to us as a town and as a law enforcement agency.
I also want to thank them for their service when I chaired the Police and Public Safety Committee. They're an integral part of events that we have here in the town. As my fellow board member said, Niska Day, the pedal paddle run, when you need an increase in workforce by double the amount of people that you have on the force, where can that come from? But only from the Auxiliary Police, and they have been exemplary in helping the town in Niskuna have these events. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite Chief Koshin up for a few words.
I have the chief of the Auxiliary, Schenectady County Auxiliary Police Department with me here, Ray, first name. And what I can say about the Auxiliary Police Department is very similar and echoing what the Town Board has said. These folks volunteer their time to come stand side by side with us and do very important events. They play a critical role, excuse me, in the function of what we do in the Niskuna Police Department, but also in all of the local PDs in Schenectady County. They help with many events in the city of Schenectady, Scotia, Glenville, Rotterdam. And without them being here and volunteering their time, we probably couldn't put these events on. And so with that, I think it's incredibly important to recognize those folks, to say thank you to those folks, and to continue to support them and give them smiles and love whenever we see them, because again, without them, we don't exist in these big events. So I can't thank enough everybody that's here, but chief, especially you, thank you so much for everything you guys do. You guys are wonderful. There's never a no, and there's never a quit. So, thank you so much, chief.
Appreciate it. Thank you. It's been 14 years in, on the force, and it's been 14 years with the Niskuna PD. And it's been a pleasure every time. I can't tell you how good it is to feel the brotherhood with all the officers. We're treated as equals and we're treated as one of their own. That's why we keep coming back. It's an exemplary police department that always has been, and I appreciate it, we appreciate it as the Auxiliary Police. I also have something for you. It's an honorary membership. I'm sorry, I'm the chief, so you're a patrolman, I'm, that's all you're gonna get. And then, so, you can, but you have to pay dues. And a patch for each one of you as a commemorative from our unit. I want to thank you all for this. This is, goes a long way with the self-esteem of our unit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before you have a seat, we just need to take a vote, and then I'd like to invite you all up for a picture. Thank you. So seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes.
Perfect. Outstanding. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to the first resolution on our agenda. Resolution number 2022-161, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to authorize the acceptance of grant monies for use in the Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-162, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing a standard workday reporting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-163, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to promote an officer in the Niskuna Police Department to police sergeant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to say that we are very excited to be promoting Sergeant Henry tonight. He's spent seven years in our department, and he has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills. He's described by other members of the department as someone they can go to, just, you know, to celebrate something positive, a shoulder to lean on if they're having a hard day, and, you know, someone who will also help them if they have a personal goal, something they're working for, that he's just someone they can go to. And we're very excited for you, and we're excited to promote you tonight. Thank you for everything you do.
I have one thing to say. I went to your, let's see, probably graduation ceremony from the academy. It was at Proctor's. I was just newly elected on the board, and at that time, the supervisor couldn't, couldn't make the graduation, so he asked if I would go down there. And I, I do remember that very much, and shaking your hand after that ceremony, and here it is, seven years later. Time goes by very fast, right, Chris? And now you're sergeant, so that's great. We're glad that you've stayed with us, and hopefully your career will continue with us here at Niskuna. Thank you.
I just have a very quick personal story I'd like to tell. A couple of months ago, one of my family members had an incident here in town, which spilled over into another neighboring jurisdiction. It was late on a Saturday afternoon or Saturday evening, I believe, and it was tough to get some answers between several different police departments, another agency, and the time of day being on a weekend. Officer Henry heard some scanner chatter about what was going on, called my relative on his cellphone, and said, "I will be there in 10 minutes, and I'm gonna help you." Chris showed up in 10 minutes, helped, and my relative spent the next couple of weeks, probably, talking about how great Officer Henry was, how great the Niskuna Police Department is, and I said, "He is the exact kind of person that needs to be promoted." So, thank you for that, Chris. I think you are the exact kind of person we need in a leadership role. So congratulations, and I'm looking forward to it.
And everyone has pretty much covered the bases. You are an exemplary officer, and I was incredibly excited to be a part of the committee, to interview you for this promotion. And I continue to be just thoroughly impressed with everything I see from you, and everything I have read about you, and everything I hear about you. And so I'm just thrilled for this opportunity to play a role in your future trajectory. I know you have a great career ahead of you, and we are excited and thrilled to have you in our department. So, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Thank you.
I, Christopher Henry.
Aye, Christopher Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Again, there's nothing more I can say that hasn't already been said. Chris came to us not too long ago, it feels like yesterday, and he's been a ray of sunshine. The man has so much energy and so much love, and every day he goes out and he finds ways to give that back to our community. And his hard work tonight is being recognized, and I couldn't be more proud of him for the man he is and the police officer he is. He's done incredible things for us, and I look forward to everything he does in the future in this position, because this, this man right here, he's a special person, and I think he's gonna do great things in this new role. So I'm super proud of you, Chris. Thanks for being a part of our agency.
Is that something I said? Okay. I apologize. I skipped the committee reports. We're gonna continue with resolutions, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll conclude with the committee reports. I was just so excited for the promotions and the ceremonial, so, all right. We'll move on to resolution number 2022-164, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending resolution number 2022-141.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-165, sponsored by Councilman McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a fence easement agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-166, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-167, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending resolution number 2022-144.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just think it's important to note that we are amending this resolution to reflect the cost savings.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-168, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to extend a contract with an independent contractor for grant writing services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-169, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing grounds worker in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-170, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to authorize the superintendent of water and sewer to advertise a request for bid for a forklift.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-171, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to approve and authorize the supervisor to enter into a utility credit purchase renewal agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-172, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to amend the purchase authorization originally provided by resolution number 2022-148.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Again, I think it's important to note that this is a cost savings to the town.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-173, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a pickup truck for use in the town's parking, Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
Thank you. Resolution, the resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-174, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember De La Rata. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to establish a land acknowledgement statement for the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would like to thank our town historian, Dennis Brennan, for working hard on developing this land grant, land acknowledgement statement. He has spent a considerable amount of time investigating the appropriate ways in which to develop and write a land acknowledgement statement, and we are honored that he has conducted this work, and I look forward to this resolution's adoption. Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-175, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing mileage reimbursement rate for the town officials and employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-176, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorize, authorizing the adjustment of expenditures from front balance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-177, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for use in the town's police department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-178, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution changing the regular Town Board meeting date for August 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-179, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to employ additional employees and independent contractors in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
Thank you. Resolution number, the resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-180 sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember Moskowitz, will the clerk please read?
A resolution implementing a policy regarding SNAP benefits at the farmer's market.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would just like to thank our councilmember Moskowitz who worked with our town comptroller and the comptroller's office to help facilitate the opportunity to have EBT or SNAP cards at the farmer's market. This will enable more individuals who are receiving SNAP benefits to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables and items at the farmer's market and I think that's a really great way to increase access, so I want to thank you for that work and I also want to thank the town comptroller and, and the farmer's market for pursuing this opportunity. Is there any other discussion?
I'd also like to thank our comptroller, Ms. Greenwood, for volunteering her time to be at the farmer's market and make sure everything runs smoothly and stay there until she feels confident that someone could take over that role. That's very generous of her time.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, is there, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-181 sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing alternate members to the town of Niskuna's Ethics Board.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank both these individuals for stepping up to volunteer for the town for the Ethics Board. Nancy is here with us this evening, so thank you for coming Nancy and thank you for volunteering to serve on this board.
I concur with those thoughts. Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to see our community members stepping up and volunteering. We have another volunteer here who serves on many committees and does excellent work and we couldn't do the business of the town without community members who volunteer their precious time to support the work, so thank you, thank you.
I'll echo the supervisor's comments. I think it's always impressive to see how many community members volunteer their time to participate in all of our boards and our committees, so thank you for volunteering to do that.
Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-182 sponsored by Councilman De La Rata, will the clerk please read?
A resolution calling for a public hearing regarding a special use permit for the purpose of daycare in a place of worship located at 1850 Union Street.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-183 sponsored by Councilmember McPartland, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an employee to the position of work crew leader in the Highway Department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-184 sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a renewal agreement for insurance coverage for the town.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-185 sponsored by Councilmember McPartland and Supervisor Puccioni.
A resolution extending the accrual vacation leave carryover date for the superintendent of highways.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-186 sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appropriating residual funds from completed prod, capital projects for use towards bike purchases.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution 2022-187 sponsored by Councilmember McPartland, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing payment for repairs of a water pump.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-188 sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata, will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting grant monies for a composting community event.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would like to thank our town planner Laura, Laura Robertson for working very hard on writing this grant. The composting community event will help us provide compost bins to our community members and it's a climate smart approach, so we're excited about this opportunity and we will also be hosting some events, some educational events at the farmer's market where our community members can learn how to use those compost bins. So not only are we working on providing compost bins for our community members, but we're also working on educating our community members how to use those compost bins. Okay, no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-189 sponsored by Councilmember McPartland, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a maintenance worker in the town's water and sewer department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Okay, I apologize for going out of order this evening, but I'd like to close with our committee reports. We'll start with police and public safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. We held our Police and Public Safety Committee meeting on June 2nd at 3:30. And under operations, we had the Police Reform Implementation Task Course meeting on May 5th and also on June 2nd at 5:30 and our next meeting will be July 7th at 5:30. We are continuing to work with our Lexi Poll Policy Manual and using it to implement over 70 policies being issued. For fleet and equipment, Chief Koshin discussed how the old car vehicle 601 is being decommissioned and the equipment in that car is going to be going into the newly fitted number 601. So we're very excited about that. Chief Koshin talked about a vendor that could provide the 2022 model year that we didn't think we'd be able to get because of supply chain issues, so we're excited to be able to get that model. Chief Koshin talked about the final quote being put together for our body worn camera system. Our Sallyport drain is still currently plugged. It's getting worked on. For training, Recruit Guest is doing very well in the academy. The police department had our situational awareness and law enforcement stress indicator through the Police One Academy that's been completed and we're going to be beginning our annual unit on procedural justice and implicit bias that's going on and it actually started June 1st. The police department will be completing its annual spring firearms range from June 6th through the 28th. Chief Koshin wanted that stated publicly so that the public wouldn't have maybe as many concerns when they heard the gunshots. Officer Wyman attended the child seat technician training June 27th through 30th and detectives Connor Gafaga and Daly will be attending the evidence disclosure and investigation interviews training in the Zone 5 Academy. Under citizen issues, Chief Koshin is working with town attorney Finnan on Scott and Tammy Kishbug's concern over the weight restriction signs on Vanantorp, figuring out how to enforce those and how to also maybe utilize other traffic signs or speed bumps to alleviate congestion and speed. He also talked, Chief Koshin also talked about the traffic study findings and Officer Munger is continuing to monitor the area for Molly Tosin. She has concerns about virtual lane regarding the crosswalk being faded and also people not stopping at the stop sign, so we went over the findings for that and patrols were directed to the area and Chief Koshin's working with Superintendent of Highways Ray Smith to freshen up the crosswalk to make it, make, make it painted so people can see it clearly. Chief Koshin stated that he's requested Mrs. Jordan to monitor the, the parking and take pictures to help with identifying issues going on with parking for the bike path on Flower Hill Court. Linda Rizzo requested more speed, speed signage in the area of Orchard Park and we went over the findings for the traffic study and Chief Koshin stated that he was contacting Superintendent of Highways Ray Smith to see if we can get more signage placed there. Mike Costella requested the town consider making an area between the bike path and river road li, at Lyons Park, a no parking zone. Chief Koshin worked with Chief Josh Wyman of the Fire District 2 regarding this parking concern and we found that it would block launching of airboats for potential water rescues, so the parking in this area probably needs to get deterred and we're looking to prioritize this issue for safety reasons. Sabrina Seeger came and talked with us about concerns over the access and communication within town buildings and the police department for residents that are deaf and hard of hearing, blind or speaking a language other than English. Mrs. Seeger stated that she has recommendations on how the town can better serve residents and we made plans, Chief Koshin, myself and Ms. Seeger to follow up in meetings to continue this dialogue. And I had also just gotten a message right before the meeting from Gary Coker. He was calling the supervisor's office and he had received concerns or he has concerns over Pierce, Pierce Road and he wants a traffic study and Chief Koshin said that that would be conducted. For town events, we had our Pedal Paddle Run. It was a great success as we spoke about earlier, thanks to, with thanks besides for all the other volunteers to the Schenectady County Sheriff's Auxiliary Officers. We also had Niskadae and that was a great success. Chief Koshin thanked Chief Lingerfeltzer and all the emergency services that assisted. And officers Hammer, Hammer Ding and Powell have completed their in-service training, so that's under personnel. We're canvassing the civil service list for potential new hires for the next academy and we were looking to fill the vacant sergeant position, which we did tonight. And Chief Koshin did explain that the detective division has historically had five members, including a detective sergeant, and it's been operating with only three detectives and no sergeant. And then our next police and public safety meeting will be July 7th at 3:30.
Thank you. Community programs?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Community Programs Committee met earlier this month on June 2nd. Lori Peretti reported that we continue to receive registrations for our summer programs. Last year's participation was excellent and based on the number of registrations we've received so far this year, we expect an even better year. The summer concert series kicked off earlier this month. So far, we've heard performances by the Niskuna Middle School Jazz Ensemble and Stage Band, the Doc Benson Band and I'm going to say this wrong, but Quintocracy is, is it right?
That's right.
All right. Is performing as we speak. These free one hour long concerts are held every Thursday at 7:00 PM on the Town Hall Green and are made possible in part by a grant from Schenectady County, which we voted to accept earlier this evening. Upcoming performances include the Carla Page Show Band, the All Paul Show and Loose Change. The farmer's market committee has been busy preparing for their upcoming season. The fourth annual market will begin on Saturday, July 9th and will be held every Saturday 8:30 to 12:30 through in October. As we heard earlier, new this year, in an effort to make the market more inclusive, some of our vendors will be accepting SNAP benefits. I do think this is a very important addition to our market. It'll make it more inclusive and more accessible to all of our town residents and I also thank the comptroller for all of her work in preparing that policy. The town pool officially opened for the season last weekend. I attended the pool employees staff meeting earlier this month and it was so impressive to see how much work goes into opening the pool. From preparing for the Department of Health inspection to making sure we're properly staffed, to ensuring that all of the pumps and equipment are functioning properly and I thought it was truly amazing to see what skilled and talented staff we have working at the pool. Just a quick shout out to Community Programs Coordinator Lori Peretti, our building maintenance supervisor Charlie Brigami and pool manager Zoe Schlesinger and her staff for everything they did to get us ready for another fun season. The Schenectady County Senior Residents Drive Thru Chicken Barbecue was hosted at the Senior Center on May 18th. This drive-through event was provided by Schenectady County Department of Senior and Long Term Care Services and over 250 meals were served. At the Senior Center, our exercise programs continue to grow with water aerobics beginning this month and continuing through the summer at the pool. Indoor exercise programs have slowed down just a little bit. Some of our instructors take a break during these summer months, but we look forward to Some of our instructors take a break during the summer months, but we look forward to the full complement returning in the fall. A pool party for residents age 55 and over will be held on Friday, July 22nd from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the pool. There will be an hour long performance by Forgettable, Forgettable Four Quartet. Snacks will be served and the first 40 attendees will be receiving a small gift. As a reminder, the Senior Center will be closed to the public next week. However, they wanted me to remind everyone that transportation using the bus is still available for any seniors who need transportation and they can call to request it. We will meet again one week from today, Thursday, July 7th at 3:00 PM in the Schaefer Room. And as always, the public is invited to attend or follow along on the town's YouTube channel. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Jason, yeah, it's funny about the name of the band, The Quintocracy. So they're a quintet and they play like chamber music or classical music. And so that's where the Quinn comes from. And then the tocracy from democracy, their sort of mission is to get music out as, you know, in a democratic way that not, it shouldn't just be played in concert halls. So that's why they're here playing outside for our residents here. And highly recommend the concerts, all the concerts, all the bands, all the entertainment that Community Programs does is, is great there.
I've been practicing saying that for the last year days, so.
I know. It's a strange thing, isn't it, right? To say that. I struggled with it myself. Okay. Back to transportation and public facilities, Public Works. Our Highway Department, Ray Smith, reports that his crew is working on trees, catch basin repairs, and getting the roadways ready for paving. You can see that we've now paved here at Town Hall, the circle and the sidewalks out in front. They were on our, our paving list, as are other streets throughout the town. We use a program, Cornell Roads Program, kind of helps with what roads should be paved due to how old they are and the traffic volume that they have. Personnel wise, Highway and Parks replacing a grounds worker and having some promotions within their department and filling positions from below. The park crews, as you know, have been working very hard mowing all our parks and our grassy areas. And that's been going well. Yard waste trucks are out and they began their regular pickups. So, and if you're not sure when that is, you can look on the website and it'll tell you when your regular yard waste pickup is. Town Pool, as Councilmember Moskowitz said, is now open. Thank you for Charlie, Ron, and everyone that helped in getting that together and getting that open. It's a, it's a big job every year, but they do it and they do it very well. So the Town Pool is open. Sweeper has completed Zone 1 and probably Zone 2. Actually, by now, I'm thinking they're into Zone 4 because that's the zone that I'm in. The town's required to sweep the streets twice a year. So they do it in the spring and then again usually in the fall. So that's going on and then our first basic rounds have been completed with that. You saw some items for resolution, purchasing some equipment. Paving list, we talked about that at the meeting, which I already discussed. We're getting a surplus list together of equipment from both highway and water and sewer. Hopefully that'll be coming in next month. Our open discussion in that part of the meeting, our town resident, Roy Thornton, was there remotely with us and says that the low mow initiative that we have in the old landfill is going very well. We're getting quite a few grassland birds and he reported on, reported on that. Also at our meeting, we discussed, as we had at Finance, a tree quote for a very sizable tree that the town department could not take down, so we had to hire that out. And our next meeting for that is on July 7th at 8:00 AM. Public Works, that's Water and Sewer, our Water and Sewer Department. They're still looking for a junior engineer in that department, although Matt Yerter reported to me that he does have two candidates and hopefully will be forthcoming with a name to fill that position very, very soon. Attorney items from that meeting, Whitmire Sewer Extension Upgrade, the Pierce Road Sewer Extension, City Water Contract, Dish Network, a fence agreement which you saw in a resolution, and two sewer extension agreements for Aqueduct Road. Water and Sewer Maintenance, there were no cuts in the highway in May, so that's good. We always have to report on that so that those can get patched properly. And we had, as you saw, some resolutions for appointments for maintenance workers and other people in that department. And getting a bid for a pickup truck and a new forklift, which the forklift that we have is from 1971. So I'm pretty sure we got as much life out of that piece of equipment as, as we could. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the supervisor, myself, met down there with a representative for ESG to see how our plant was operating. It was a very productive meeting. The water treatment plant, MJ Engineering is sending out the bids for the work that we've got for that. We're going to be making some more upgrades to our water treatment plant. Recycling Center, we discussed that. Our Fall TV and TV Recycling and Paper Shredding Event will be in October. We don't know the exact date yet, but we will know that by the next meeting. And that meeting is July 7th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you so much. And I will go ahead and provide the committee report for economic development, historic preservation, and environmental conservation. So we have a couple of exciting announcements. First, I'm happy to report that Niskuna has launched its Solarize Niskuna campaign and it has already been a great success, thanks to all the residents that have signed up so far. The town planner is going to schedule a nighttime session for people to come and ask questions to the community solar providers next week. Keep an eye out for that. In the meantime, check out the Solarize Niskuna campaign on our new tab. It's a great way to reduce our, your monthly energy bill. So subscribe to Clean Energy and you can help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It's a trifecta, people. Secondly, the town has had a very successful spongy moth information session with the New York State DEC Forester, Scott Moxom. Mr. Moxom was kind enough to let us record that information so anyone whose trees are suffering from a spongy moth infestation can log on to the Town of Niskuna YouTube, YouTube channel and find that presentate, presentation for information on what to do. And I would recommend, even if your trees have not been attacked by the spongy moths this year, it's a good idea to watch that presentation so you are prepared next year. That's my situation. So thanks again to Mr. Moxom for assisting the town of Niskuna because residents here do love their trees. I'm also excited for the resolution tonight to accept that $5,000 grant from NISERTA to have those compost bins here at town where residents can come and learn about composting and pick up a compost bin for their own home. Composting is an excellent way to reduce greenhouse gases, both by reducing waste and enriching soil. Soil is a carbon sink. So more details on the event will be announced soon. And finally, the town of Niskuna recently enacted a historic preservation code and it requires members of, for a historic preservation committee to review and document historic buildings. And if anyone is interested in volunteering for this new committee or any of our wonderful committees, please email the town planner, Laura Robertson, and she will get you started on the process. I'd also like to add that tonight, we passed a resolution for the land acknowledgement statement that since it has now passed, will be read at the beginning of our town board mem, town board meetings, our agenda meeting, as well as our town board meeting. And if any other boards or committees would like to begin their meeting by reading that land acknowledgement statement, they are welcomed and encouraged to do so. I would encourage you to talk with our town historian, Dennis Brennan, to make sure you are getting the pronunciations correct. He is a great resource, so thank you. The next committee meeting is Friday, July 1st, which is tomorrow, 8:30 AM in the Town Board Room. And it is hybrid. So that is all for, all we have for committee reports tonight. I've spoken enough. I think we're ready to move into executive session. Seeing that we have no other business, I'd like to move into executive session pursuant to Public Officers Law, Section 105, subsection F, to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. At the close of executive session, we will not take up any additional town business. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.